I like using that. Good morning. Hi. Jeff Stone speaking. Hello to everyone online, hello to everyone in the room, fellow trustees and everyone who's made this meeting possible. We're here on February 16th, 9:00 AM to convene a meeting of the SUNY Erie Board of Trustees and I'll begin by asking our Secretary Kerry to please call the role since I believe we have a quorum present.
Okay. Melody Baker?
Here.
Len Lannaham?
Here.
Amanda Lowe?
Here.
Candace Morrison?
She is present on screen.
On screen. Kerry Phillips here, Jeffrey Stone?
Here.
Denise Wilson, absent. Marcel Suarez-Pinero?
Here.
Thank you.
And I'm going to get my materials but as I do so let's start in the usual way of asking everyone in the room to quickly say hello, good morning and introduce themselves and remind us of their role. Go ahead, Mark.
Mark Patrol, Chief of Campus Safety and Emergency Manager.
All DNU, Business Manager, Facilities and Systems.
Kathy Colasto, AVP of IRA.
Oh, Dan Ramsey.
Jason Perry, Duke of Students.
Eric Meals, VP of Enrolling Management.
Juan Martinez, Dean of Business of Public Service.
Mike Wong, Interim VP of Marketing and Communications.
Kelly Reid, VP of Workforce Management.
I will be an assistant to the board of trustees.
Dr. Boni, IT.
Ryan Vogel, IT.
And Marcel?
Marcel Suarez-Pinero, Shiloh Trustee.
Kerry Phillips, trustee. Melody Baker, trustee, Vice President and Warden of Time.
Jeff Stone Chair and flagrant violator of all rulings.
Good morning, everyone. Audience Guy, Officer in Charge.
Good morning, Amanda Lowe, trustee.
Len Lannaham, trustee. Good morning.
As always, thank you very much those of you around... Oh, on the screen. Go ahead. Go ahead, Candace. Sorry.
Candace Morrison, trustee. Del Plano, Controller.
Anyone else online? Okay, thanks. Great to have everyone here. Okay, so we have to have a bit of an expedited meeting today and here's why. We met three weeks ago, so not very long ago when we had a very thorough meeting including an executive session. Today we will cover some business, including some significant business, but I personally will have to leave the meeting at 10:35. I have a 10:50 medical appointment relatively nearby and I'll be able to make that if I leave then. So if the meeting is continuing, Melody, our Vice Chair, will take over but we'll see where we wind up. We'll keep moving things through. So the first thing we're going to do today is go quickly into executive session where we have some topics to cover but I don't expect it to be a long laborious executive session. More along the lines of cover some things, come out and get back to the regular meeting. But we need to do it first because we've got to just take care of some things and we have to do it when we have six people. So if I may have a motion to go into executive session to discuss the typical personnel matters and related things?
Some move.
Thank you. Second, Kerry. All in favor?
I agree.
With apologies, we'll get back as quickly as we can, okay? And it shouldn't be talked too long.
Oh, good.
Not...[1151.10]
We are back from executive session and a couple people from the Janigramms are here. Welcome. Thank you very much for the hard work you did for those articles, for the Mechatronics Program and for the transition of the city campus over tonight. This detective article, we really appreciated the work going into that. So what I want to report is that we did take action in executive session and the action that we took was to evaluate the situation with respect to our officer in charge, Dr. Adi and Sagai, and enter into a contract with Dr. Sagai as we had promised to do during the course of her entrance into this position. And I've been authorized to sign that contract by the trustees and it provides that Dr. Sagai will continue as officer in charge under the arrangements we negotiated. And we've also provided that we are desirous of Dr. Sagai assuming the title of acting president instead of officer in charge. These are technical terms under the SUNY guidelines and rules. They each have significance. There's an interim president, an acting president, and officer in charge. Typically, an officer in charge has a certain temporary connotation. You need someone in charge at all times so that that title exists. An acting president is a person who is assuming and is empowered with all the duties and responsibilities of a president, but also is able to continue seeking the permanent presidency. Whereas an interim president, just for the record, is someone who comes in and has a similar set of powers and responsibilities but is not considered a candidate for the ultimate position of permanent president. So that's the distinction between acting president and interim president. But we, the board, have felt very impressed with the work that's been done by all the people sitting around the corner, around the edges of this room, and I'm looking at every single one with some design because it's been a tremendous amount of work in the last several months as the college has gone through a lot. But it's done so under Dr. Sagai's leadership and that has been noted by the board, appreciated by the board, community, and other observers of the college. And I think I speak for everyone in the college community to thank you for the pound of flesh that you devoted here in the last few months. And I think this title situation is one that we really see, the title is catching up to the performance because you've acted as our president for many months now and you've done so very well and we appreciate it. So we still, you know, have discussion in terms of exactly where we go from here, in terms of selecting a permanent president for the college, but we are unanimously approving of this and we appreciate your accepting of that title. And remember, everyone, that that, for now, you continue as officer in charge until SUNY approves this. Because unlike an officer in charge designation, which does not require SUNY board approval, acting presidency designation does require such approval. So the way our contract spells out is that we are assigning that title to you with your consent and we are waiting for SUNY approval and when we will submit that today, a request for that, and when it comes, you will assume that new title under the arrangements that we have with you. And then we will continue on a separate path with exactly what we're doing in terms of the permanent presidency. But I'll give you a chance to comment?
Well, I appreciate, thank you so much for the board, the college community, our faculty and staff, more importantly, our students. I am an alumni of SUNY Erie. This is really changing not only the college but also on a personal level. It has made a huge impact for my family and my kids, right, and my children. So I thank everyone, particularly all these individuals that are here, and there's a lot that are not here that have been instrumental in moving the college. And we have a lot of work to do, but we have a lot of good work to do and we're going to highlight that. And then specifically to the Buffalo News, just highlighting some of the wonderful things, to constantly see our students in the pictures. I got so much compliments. So again, thank you. But again, I'm committed to the college. We have some work to do. We're going to do the job and make sure our college is highlighted in the most positive way. So thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Sagai. And congratulations on this. And again, thank you for your hard work over the last few months. Other questions? Any comments or?
No, Jeff, I think you did a tremendous job really echoing the spirit of the board. You have truly been a leader throughout this entire process. A snowstorm, so many different things that had to happen. And you've just been there morning, noon, night, thinking of things that we wouldn't have even possibly thought of.
Don't forget weekends.
And weekends.
Holiday weekends.
Yes, because Jeff got a lot of calls.
Just going above and beyond and, I mean, just waiting this on for your contract and, I mean, just your, just the entire time, just so, you know, humble in your leadership and just constantly bringing everybody. And I think that you demonstrate what leadership looks like.
Thank you.
Yes, Lynn?
Jeff, I just want to reiterate what Melody said and just really focus on showing that, I think you showed real leadership during the storm and the aftermath of that. I mean, literally, right at the time when our students were registering for classes, we lost our ability to have the city campus function as a result of the water burst and the pipes that burst at the city campus. And right away, we were able to transition into providing just very good professional space for those students to continue this semester. So that was, that was real leadership. Also, I think I've noticed a real sense of spirit amongst the senior staff. I think we've got some enthusiasm that has been renewed, which I think is very important to building the culture that we need here at ECC to become a real magnet for kids that want to get a start, start up on their education. So we're very happy that you're agreeing to these terms and we're looking forward to working with you.
Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you. We are continuing with a forum present. So what we'll do now is move on to some things that require votes, especially before I need to leave. So let's start with the consent agenda and the Board of Trustees minutes from January 26th. As I mentioned, only three weeks ago, so in very recent memory, I did read the minutes. I had no comments. Anyone else? If not, a motion then to approve our January 26th?
So moved.
Thank you, Karen.
Second.
Second. Thank you. And all in favor?
Aye.
They're approved. Board of Trustee items received outside committee meetings. Now, these are approval items, these next three, but they're of a relatively routine nature by my estimation, with maybe one exception. We have the agreement with the Buffalo Bills and then the human resources agenda, which we always take a look at. We'll talk about those and Adi, I think, will lead us with those or her designee. But the CSEA thing, your first reaction to that may be, didn't we do that last month? Yes, we did, but it was with AFSCME, AFSCME, A-F-S-C-S-M-E, and that was the other union. So basically, what we have here is staying on par with what the county has negotiated, not being in a separate class by ourselves with lesser pay rate because we were losing employees. And yes, it is quite, you know, it's a significant financial item, but we've looked at it. And frankly, we can't run the college without employees who, if we have a constant drain to the county and other positions.
Right.
So we had no opposition to the last one. I don't think we'll have any to this. But Adi, could you lead us through these three or designate people to do so?
Sure. So if we may, can we start with the transportation? And Arda, I know you're on. Arda, do you want to go through that real quick first?
Yes. Hi. I wasn't sure if that actually was passed. But thank you so much for bringing that up. I, okay, so we ask that the board actually approves the resolution that we provided for the shuttle services. This is basically to extend the number of days we provide shuttle services to our students. Initially, the initial contract was approved for 105 days in the first year in the amount of $271,000 roughly. And year two and three, they are suggesting it on, just one second.
While Arda paused, this is something that's not in our original packet but is instead with us today.
And I apologize. Arda's supposed to be on vacation, but she decides to come on here. So I apologize.
I am very sorry about that. We are on vacation. So I have someone come in trying to fix the phone because I needed it earlier. Okay. So back to the resolution. So the current agreement between the Cedar, the Cedar Company and Erie Community College has been revised to allow for an increase of the number of days of shuttle services provided to our students. Our original contract did specify for 105 days of service within the first year in the amount of $272,000. And then year two and three for 115 days at $289,000, roughly, $289,000 for year two and three. So the sum of the three fiscal years would be $850,000 in shuttle services. However, now, we propose to amend the contract to extend the number of days in shuttle services from 105 to 136 days per the request of our students and faculty that we see the need and we would like to increase the number of days we provide these services for. For year one, the number of days is increasing from 105 to 136 days with a cost of $350,000. And then for year two and three, the number of days remain the same as the original contract at 149 days. No, I'm sorry. And then, I'm sorry, even the revised contract is increasing the number of days to 149 days in the amount of $376,000. The total contract amount is for $1.1 million for the span of three years. This basically represents $252,000 increase overall from the original contract to the proposed contract and it's solely basically, it attributes the number of days. So we think that this, no, not we think, we believe that this is important to actually increase, to revise the original contract because we want, we want to be able to serve our students' needs. And considering the population and the amount of students that are actually using the services, it is in the best interest of our students to actually revise this contract.
And part of it is that our students are paying transportation fee part of their tuition?
Yes.
So I think it's critical that we provide that service. The other thing, as we're moving along, as you know, with the situation at the city campus, our students need to be able to move around and be able not only to get to their classes but also to some of the services that we have at one campus versus another. So I think this is a critical investment in our student to support the mission of the college.
I agree. And I think it's something with our, especially as we move forward and figure out where we're placing what programs, what we're doing, where we're doing it. The ability to be flexible and move around will be even more important than it has been.
Absolutely.
So I have no objection to this. It is a fairly pricey item. Is this going to be something that the legislature has to, has to approve?
Yes, this definitely has to go to the legislatures for the approval before the contract is finalized.
And keep in mind, we've already budgeted for and are paying this every year. We're talking about an increase, not a completely new expense.
Right.
And obviously a critical expense. So.
Correct.
Any other trustee members have questions?
There was a little question when Dr. Balk was here about a dramatic increase in some costs dealing with, I don't know, was this vendor or a previous vendor? But is our daily rate pretty much in line with what it's been?
Pretty much so, yes. And I think the plan at the time was to look for another vendor, but we did that comparison. So the other vendor is even higher to do that, yes.
I remember that, Lynn. Glad you brought that up because we did have Glad you brought that up because we did have some concerns about this vendor around September, August. Dr. Balkan brought that up, so.
The Cedar, this company is actually charging us a reasonable amount compared to the market. And what they are charging for, we have done our due diligence, we have done our investigation of trying to consider what can we do for our students from even getting our own shuttles to different vendors outside of our own resources. And the Cedar Company honestly offers the best price at this point in time.
Okay. Any further comments or questions on this? Let's take this up. I think we'll vote unless people object on all four items, the three that are on our schedule plus this one that has been presented by Arda and Adia. You want to talk about the bills? That's an easy one.
Sure, I'm going to get Dr. Nelson to come in to do those.
I'm just, I'm going to be jumping off at this point, but Melody, like I said, I will text you when I'm jumping back on.
Sounds good, thank you.
Thanks, Candace.
Thanks, Candace.
Yes, please.
Okay, so the, this item is for the use of the Bills' AdPro Sports Training Center. It's something that we've done for the past several years. It allows our football team to practice in the spring when the fields are typically muddy. So they allow the use of the AdPro Sports Training Center for 10 practices. It's a total cost of a little over $5,000, and it's paid through the Athletics Department's ASC budget. So it's something that is budgeted every year, and it really does allow our football players the ability to kind of keep their skills up, keep their practice going. It's a very low-cost item, but we see a pretty high return from the students using it.
Sounds good to me.
Thank you. As far as the Human Resources Agenda, page, our page 15 on our materials, there's only one item there, and that's Eric's extension of leave of absence to continue the work you're doing as part of the Cedar Executive Staff. Any comments or questions from you?
No, no comments really. I've learned so much over these last things now, 10 months. I can't believe it's already been 10 months. It's been a whirl and just unprecedented situations, but honestly, from a personal perspective, the growth that I feel that I've been able to gain from this is tremendous, and I'm very grateful for the opportunity. I'm so appreciative of the faculty and staff we've been able to collaborate with and be able to make an impact to the whole institution. You know, we're making strides in being able to build connections with our students, engage them, and with the intent to retain them and really capture what is great about ECC and the community, so building relationships with our community-based partners, et cetera. So I'm so indebted to do it. I always, as I've shared before, have a passion for our students, although it's not in the classroom, I have also seen the opportunity to be able to help support it at an institutional level. And so I am excited to continue this for as long as the opportunity affords me, but I certainly would appreciate the opportunity if it's available to go back to the classroom as well.
I'm sure you missed that, as most faculty members do, but I think it's great that someone who's got the oversight of enrollment and the leadership on that front that you have has come from our faculty because ultimately, really, who has more at stake than our faculty in terms of our enrollment and who has more interest in that and experience in understanding what our students need, what attracts them to ECC, what keeps them at ECC. I'm glad that we have a faculty member who's advancing in your career in this way. Appreciate it, and appreciate the work you've done as a member of the staff. I talked about the CSEA thing. We had a big discussion of that last month, and I think we're on all fours with that. If we're ready, I would suggest that we take a motion to approve not only items one, two, and three on our Page Two of our materials, but also the Cedar Bus Transportation Resolution that was discussed. Motion?
So vote.
Thank you. All right. Any further discussion or questions on any of the four? If not, all in favor of all four passing? Aye? And any opposed? All four of those items are approved. We do have some information of the typical sort, and I will go over that relatively quickly given our time constraints today. Facility rentals and waivers are continuing at the typical ratio. We're always looking to waive where appropriate, but not look to waive. Supplier report, nothing jumped out at me there. Budget to actual. Arda, I don't know if you're still, oh, there you are, yes. We can talk a little bit about budget to actual. Your footnotes, as usual, were quite helpful. My general take on this is as follows, and then if you could just fill in any gaps. What I want to draw the trustees' attention to is the fact that we are running relatively level on revenues, even a little higher than a year prior, and we are substantially reduced on expenses, so down 23% on our expenses, point to point in year from last year. So I think this bears just a little spotlight because, you know, very often you'll say, gee, ECC, you know, they've had a big enrollment decline, and they've got to understand that things are different, and we cannot have the same infrastructure supporting 40% less students. You get that a lot, I do. And I think we should, it should be noted, I mean, we took some very difficult steps, and Art's footnote points it out, we lost 210 employees to retirement or frankly, layoff last year. 210 employees headcount reduction. So it's not like the trustees and the other leaders of the college have just said, well, we're just going to carry on and hope to get more money. That's not what has happened. Obviously, it's like steering the Titanic, right? Any large $100 million institution is not turning on a dime, but with everybody's help and understanding, we've taken steps to try to bring our fixed operating costs into line with frankly, a declining enrollment that shows no sign of abating quite yet. With good, strong leadership, we can make the place attractive, keep it attractive for maintaining enrollment and growing enrollment, but we are dealing with a significant decline. So I just wanted to point that out. When I saw that in your footnote, those 210 are real people, real families. It's hurtful to even spotlight that, but also, it's not right to ignore the fact that we've taken reasonable managerial steps to try to bring revenue in line with our expenses and vice versa. Other comments? That's what I have on page 24. Arda, anything you want to highlight for us?
Nope, you are spot on. Yes, that this dashboard represents the revenues. It's a good point in time because it represents especially the tuition and fees from fall of 2022. So, but yeah, they are in line with last year. And then just the salary savings, it's basically just the wages from the number of employees we left. We certainly do feel the loss of all those individuals leaving us both professionally and fiscally, so, but we are communicating, I think, as effective as we can, even with budget preparations for '23, '24. I mean, I gave a brief overview again of the email I sent to all staff and faculty at our institution highlighting what we are expecting and then really just keeping that open communication with our community.
Arda, I really want to compliment you on that email. I read it, the other trustees read it. It was, as you say, spot on in terms of assessing where we are and sending out a good message to the college community. I encourage everyone who hasn't seen, if you haven't seen or haven't read Arda's email from yesterday, it's worth clicking on that and opening and reading it carefully. Thank you for that.
Thank you, yes. We have overcome a lot, honestly, in the scope of what the institution went through just these past, what, less than four years that I've been on board? I mean, you're talking about the pandemic and software implementation, the layoffs, like just the impact from all the changes. I can't even imagine what every person must be feeling in the room. However, it goes to say that we have come a long way. We are still in business, and we are moving forward despite the challenges, despite the enrollment declines. And I think if we stick around as a unit, I think we can come really far just keeping that communication again, elaborating and communicating as effectively as possible. That was my goal with that email.
Yeah, it was achieved, and that spirit is growing here, and we all need to work on that, and all the points you made, honor them. So the facility and capitals project looked relatively routine to me. We have the typical projects happening and on planning board. Human Resources Personnel Transaction Report, I just want to highlight there. It does list Colleen Reedie joining us. Colleen, welcome once again. I know we welcomed you last month, but now that you've been in the presence of her, so we're glad to have you here as our workforce development person, and your experience in higher education at ECC and in workforce development will be very valuable to the college community.
Thank you. Really thrilled to be here.
Glad to have you.
Thank you.
So those, I think, were just, those are our informational items. We're going to move on from those. And with committees, I just want to make one quick announcement about committees. We, as a board, have talked a little bit, and I've spoken particularly to Amanda and others about this. We feel that there's one more committee to be added to the board structure, and it's loosely titled, and I'm not wedded to this title because I want to give that authority to the committee itself, but Human Resources. What we have here is a huge, huge investment in people going on. Most of our budget is comprised of salaries and benefits, and like any big organization dependent on its people, you really have to have spotlight at the highest level on those concerns. And they come in all shapes and sizes. How are we doing under our contracts? What should our contracts look like going forward? What about the grievance process? Are we handling that correctly? What's going on in terms of the atmosphere around campus? And are we following our policies when it comes to the way people are behaving in the workplace and being treated in the workplace? Those are the types of issues that I have in mind for this committee. And I've asked, again, I mentioned earlier how much talent we have in the board in terms of professional experience and interest in these areas. And I've asked Amanda Lau to chair that committee with assistance from at least Len and Candace, and I mentioned this earlier, but that's really something that we go starting next month. So I know I talked a little bit about that earlier, but just to reiterate, thank you, Amanda. And if you want to add anything?
No, thanks, Jeff.
Okay. Looking for, that will now be Kelly, a new budget, a new committee each month, please, and it'll start meeting soon. Janice is not here, and Candace is taking over Curriculum, Student Success and Diversity, okay? But since they're not here, does anyone have a report on this?
Yes, we do. We have a couple.
Oh, go ahead.
We have a couple of them.
Good morning. At the Curriculum, Student Success and Diversity meeting a few weeks ago, there were three items that were brought to the committee's attention. The first is an agreement with the Global Concepts Charter School. And what this would do is allow us then to be able to expand our offerings for the Advanced Studies classes. In the Strategic Enrollment Management Plan, being able to increase our offerings of Advanced Studies is one of the goals, and an action such as this really complements that goal. And we're looking then for the approval of the board to be able then to expand our offerings by then going in with Global Concepts Charter School.
Yep, and we have two other items for our approval. Let's cover them and then vote on all three because I think they're all in joint support.
This was with regards then to the Chief Dogma Police using of their firing range. Probably Mark is going to be able to answer any specific questions. I did as best as I could, actually learning from him as well as our departments. The essential use of this is to be able then to utilize the space to then be able to improve the competencies that are gained as a part of the Law Enforcement Training Academy. And this is a renewal agreement as we've done in the past. And no charge. That's correct.
And Juan Martinez, our dean oversees that as well, so I just want to make sure we invited folks, I want to make sure it's face tied to the project that they're overseeing.
And the last one, and I would be remiss if I didn't highlight Terry. As you mentioned about my opportunity to be in this role, being able to work with Terry is just astounding. I mean, anytime where now I have a question about whether it's Independence Bound, Youth Engagement Services, and also helping with Middle Ole College, Terry is there with stride already in place to be able to really assist the college. And so I'm so indebted to have Terry on the team. I'm so excited for it. I'm glad that she was here as well. This is continuing our agreement with Youth Engagement Services and Independence Bound Renewal, which is a great program.
Terry, did you get a chance to introduce yourself earlier as we went around?
I did not because as I was walking in, everyone was walking out.
Oh.
My name is Terry Purvey, and thank you, Eric, for such, you know, really kind words. But I am the Project Director of the Independence Bound Youth Engagement Services Program. It's been at the college, housed at city campus for 30 years. So we have just reached our 30-year anniversary. And as you guys know, you know, approved the contract for many years. We work with Erie County Sponsor Care, who we provide them with college prep services as well as vocational training with opportunities for paid internships in the communities so that by the time they leave Sponsor Care at 21, they have some work experience and at least a plan for what they want to do long-term with their life.
This, I will say, is probably my favorite contract to approve all year. It's such an important program, does such, it's so spotlighted on folks who really need a hand to get to that next level, and we appreciate what you're doing with that. Very pleased to support that. So yes, the yes, the firing range, and our global concepts. Anything else out of the committee?
Those are the three.
If not, may I have a motion to approve those items as presented?
So vote.
Second.
Jeff, if I may, just want to mention that Terry is also taking over the Moms Program. So Terry, if you could just talk a little bit about that for us?
Sure. Well, I mean, I'm still fairly new and learning about the Moms Program, but I know that the initiative is working to provide some supports to our parents on campus right now or in the past, it's worked solely with moms, but we're hoping to increase that, to open up the services to all student parents that attend at St. Mary's so that they have supports amongst themselves and peers. So we're thinking about organizing some peer groups where they can kind of support each other while they're on campus, if it means helping with watching the children or, you know, creating study partners and things of that nature. That's something we're going to be working on with the fall rollout, as well as providing information on resources in the community for different needs that they may have, if it relates to housing, counseling, different supports that parents need, child care, in addition to some financial supports that they may have. So if they find themselves in extenuating financial circumstances, we want to be able to support them as well. So I'm still learning about the program. I'm just now meeting with the board of the foundation and trying to understand what needs they have and, you know, what things they want us to work on. So yes, it's been an experience so far. It's been a learning curve, and I'm hoping that we'll be able to roll that program out with the support of Adia and Eric in the fall and support our student parents as best we can.
Picked up the literature on Moms. I believe that's an acronym, am I right?
Yes.
What does it stand for?
Our Mothers Through Education and Employment.
And so one of the things that we talked with the foundation, they do fund us, and they do want us to revisit and reframe this whole concept. And so one of the things that we're looking at is parents as opposed to just moms, so to open it up.
I see, that makes sense.
And so changing the name itself and just really rebranding the entire program so that we can do, we have peer institution in the area that have been very successful by changing their names. And so we really want to take advantage of this opportunity and work with the foundation. We really need the outcome of the program. Thank you.
Seems a lot of her.
Thank you.
Anything else here who are ready to vote? Okay. What we're doing now is voting on the three items under Item 4A, 1, 2, and 3, Curriculum, Student Success and Diversity items. We had a motion and a second, I believe, and now we're voting all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
All opposed? All are approved. Okay. Minutes of the meeting from January 12th are here, they're for our information. If anyone has any significant comments, let Kelly know. Budget. We met on January 12th and have not met since then, so I reported last meeting on a very extensive budget meeting. Again, Arda, thank you for your extensive presentation at that meeting, which then we shared at the board meeting three weeks ago. So that's where we are. I would comment on a couple of things, though. We had, the Governor's Executive Budget did appear on February 1st. Remember, on January 26th, I said this is about to come out. There'll be things in there that are of interest to us, and in fact, there were. We now have to see how many of those things make it to the final budget, but my general sense, from having been at several legislative breakfasts and general experience, is that many of them will. Important for us is the 100% floor, a number of other things that Arda highlighted for us. Keep an eye on that, I said last time, and I say again, let's watch the negotiations. Typically, they continue all through February and into March until April 1st, and then hopefully we'll have a budget, a real budget. I mentioned Arda's email, that's been discussed, and I want to share with the group so that Mr. Kruehl... And I want to share with the group, so that Mr. Kruehl has no chance to decline when he gets here. I intend to suggest that he become our Budget Committee Chair. And the reason I say that is he has a tremendous wealth of knowledge, having been the Budget Director for Erie County for many years, many years under the Gorski administration. And since then, he has followed not only county finances, but college finances with a microscope. He is, he's a blogger, and he's just never lost his interest in the college or the county, even when he left official office. I am very much looking forward to everyone who hasn't met Ken, meeting him. He's going to be a tremendous trustee. He loves the college, and he has been a public servant of the First Order. So when he gets here, unless I completely missed my guess, he will be very willing to help us with all things financial and our relationship with the county and so forth. So he'd be a very good addition. Len, you have a good background with Ken.
Yeah, first want to say that he's, he's watching livestream today.
Is he?
So let's say hello to Ken and.
Well, that was, that was unrehearsed. I didn't know.
But Ken, I've known Ken for like four decades, maybe five. And he's always been a top-notch budget analyst, staffer, had a key job at the NFTA for many years, Budget Director for the County, Canisius College, understands the, the academic background. And his work charter schools, I mean, there's just, could not have been a better and more experienced and talented person to be added to this board, particularly in the area of budget and finance. And just, he's just a career public servant, loves public service, has been doing it his whole life. Even when he was in the private sector, he was doing something publicly at the same time. So we're going to be very fortunate to have him amongst us.
Any other questions, or, I don't know if Ken can speak to us or not, but I think he's maybe just watching.
He's watching.
Okay. Ken, we look forward to welcoming you at the next board meeting once you're approved and alleged. Policy and Governance, Mel?
No, so, no. There are, there's nothing to report out at this time. I do believe in our next meeting we will.
And we have our retreat coming up where we, that will touch on some policy matters, that will trigger some things. Strategic Planning and Assessment, Carrie?
We canceled our last meeting, so we don't have anything to update from the, from the last time.
Yeah, again, it's only been three weeks since we had a full.
Yeah, so we'll have another meeting in before the next meeting, and we'll have stuff to report out at that point. And I would say the same for technology.
Fine, yep. Marketing, can I, anything to, anything new?
No, Mike, anything you want to add to the, we haven't met, and, you know, we're waiting to establish this relationship with our, with the Martin Group, and once that is in place, we'll be.
Yep, I would just say that we have, we have submitted that to the county, so we'll be soon on, on our decision.
Mike, while you're at the floor, I just wanted to spotlight the fine work you did in terms of working with Janet and our leadership here in terms of setting up that arrangement to take a good hard look at the north campus transition and even the mechatronics and some of the other things. So I know you, Janet, you were busy establishing a good working relationship about the college, and I appreciate, that took some legwork to get that whole City Campus thing organized that day, and we all spent a couple hours walking. It was great, which were. And I kind of wanted to single out our Kristin Goss, who is our Chair of the Culinary, our leader in that area. And Kristin, I know, was instrumental in spotlighting how the Byzons have been such a great partner for the college in terms of inviting us in to use their, their facilities and having our culinary students really not miss a beat despite this wild disruption and the inability to move the culinary supplies from one building to the other. So that really was heartwarming to see that that worked out so well. Standing there in the kitchen and they got a chance to, I don't know, give Janet some food or something. It was great. So thank you, Mike. I've moved into my, my report of the chair, which I have just some highlights here, I'll just quickly go through. I continue my weekly calls, or frankly, a lot more frequently than that, with Dr. Segai. But we always speak at 10:00 AM on Monday, so if anyone has an agenda item for, for that conversation, please submit it to either one of us. The City Campus situation, I'll leave to Dr. Segai and her report. We had a robust discussion of that the last meeting or two. Again, thank you, Mark, and everyone involved over there, Paul especially, you guys have been doing some tremendous work in getting that situation handled, and we appreciate it. That seems to be not missing a beat, and I just thought the article was fantastic. We talked about, I'm going to have more to say about Janice. Janice is not here today, and we're going to make sure that she's online when we really thank her for what she's done for Erie Community College. There's not a heart at this table and around this room that isn't totally warmed toward Janice, and she needs to be recognized for the work she did for seven years. Ken, we've talked about, and so looking forward to having him join the board. We still will, though, have two vacancies, because while Mark appointed Ken, he's taking the place of Janice. So that issue that I continue to be concerned about, two empty seats and difficulty managing and finding quorums, we're going to continue to pursue that. Adiam and I are meeting with the county executive again on Tuesday, and while he has fully appointed everyone that he can, certainly he, it can help us on the other side of the gubernatorial appointments, as can Len and others.
Just a comment, I was, I was following Amanda before, I was in Albany this week and met with Melissa Belkensky, who's the Deputy Chief of Staff, who's also informing she's sort of handling some appointments, the board appointments for Western New York. So I think we've got somebody we can communicate with, whoever we want to recommend or however we want to work that process.
And there's been some back and forth about potential board members.
Right.
Other trustees or other members of the community who think you know of a good board member, you know, communicate that either to me or Dr. Segai or to Len.
Right.
We seem to be the ones who are closest to, let's get this done. And we do have some people out there, there's, one of whom was Ken Kruehl, and delighted that he's joined, so.
That's great.
Yeah. Let's see. New committees, we talked about that. Oh, just a quick, Dr. Segai, you're probably going to talk about this, but the celebration of women and girls in sports at the Flickinger on January 28th, right after our last meeting. Very cool thing. I just want to, why don't you say a word or two about that?
Great, and that also, it was outstanding with, with young girls from all of the Western New York, our faculty and staff who were there. We had also really nice media coverage, it was on the news, to showcase the, the effort. Our Assembly Member Monica Wallace and Beth Self also made that an official day, Girls and Women's Sport Day, so that was also exciting. So it was really exciting to see and empower young girls to start in this sport and then to be the, the college to host. It was also an honor.
Excellent, yeah. And the timing was interesting with our whole City Campus transformation. I continue to attend and encourage others to tune into, by YouTube, the Senate meetings. You can really get a feel for what's going on in the minds of, of those who lead the college, the faculty members in particular, what they're working on, what they're thinking about, what they're concerned about. So I think that's very helpful, and it's always well-publicized by Kelly, thank you. And Colleen Quinn does a terrific job of leading those meetings. She's very inclusive, you really get a sense that she's understanding and listening to those who are speaking, and it's just a very, very good job by Colleen, and worth the time. The mechatronics article I mentioned, was very happy about that City Campus article, again, has been mentioned. I mentioned a couple of times the retreat. We are trying to find a date and time that works for all of us on board. It's not all that easy, because we're trying to find a weekend or a significant block of time. But we will continue to work on that with Kelly and each other until we come up with something. Don't have a report yet on a firm date and time, but we do want to have a retreat of the board. There's a lot going on. We'll make good use of that time when we do meet, and hopefully it'll be sooner rather than later. As for the matter of the search for a permanent president of the college, we're glad about the actions that have been taken today, of course. A subject of the retreat will be exactly what the board plans to do or wants to do with respect to the permanent presidency. And I'd like that to be a thoughtful discussion among all eight of us, or more, but if we happen to get another trustee by that time, but it'll probably be just the eight of us. And we'll have more to say about that in due course, but I want to be, I want that to be a thoughtful discussion about where we go. But I, we're very content as trustees right now about where we are with the campus leadership and what is happening, and we feel like it's important to have empowered campus leadership at all times. So that is where we find ourselves right now, and we will continue to see what else The Bill Stadium situation, the Gilbane-Turner space is, I think, beginning to be occupied. Paul, you want to just quickly mention something on what's going on over at South and Buffalo Bills?
Sure.
Of interest.
They executed a contract last week, so we got it back, and it's starting to make the rounds between myself, a review man for content, I'll send it down to Leslie Ortiz-Bog to approve as deformed, and then it'll go to Dr. Segai for final signature. We've got pretty much all our old records out of there. We've had, I don't know how much recycling we did, it's amazing how much paper we've accumulated over the years. But they're anticipating getting some bodies in there as early as next week to start the beginning phases of their planning to actually bring it around early next month. They, we kind of carved out a little deal where we're not going to lose the parking lot F, or, I'm sorry, G, the one more towards the DMV. They're going to run their fence around that, so we'll be able to maintain that parking lot. They will take Lot F as part of the lease, or, I'm sorry, the license agreement for the facility, and that's where they're mostly going to be housing their contractor trailers. Turner-Gilbane, or Gilbane-Turner, I should say, they'll mostly be housed in Building 1, and then Building 6 will be used for warming, for meetings, for training sessions, and other things of that nature. But they're, they're, they were actually walking through the building today, I think, kind of trying to get a feel for who's going to go where.
Appreciate, Paul, your being the eyes and ears of the college there. And obviously, to the extent that you feel that anything that's going on there is impinging on our students or our operations inappropriately, let us know, and we'll address that. But for now, we're viewing this as positive in at least two ways. One, being a good neighbor, two, an important community initiative, the erection of a new stadium that's been endorsed from the state on down to the local and has a significant community benefits agreement component to it, a number of aspects of which I think will benefit our students and communities. So I'm excited about that, to see more details as they come out. So being a good neighbor is one, and then the revenue stream is not insignificant to the college. So this is kind of a win-win, I think, but we've got to make sure that our campus, while being a good neighbor, is not adversely affected by the operation. So we're depending on you to be aware of that, be sensitive to those possibilities, and bring them to us early if it needs attention.
Will do.
Okay. Let's see. I just continue to be grateful to County Executive Mark Colencars and his Chief of Staff Ben Swanacamp for graciously spending a lot of time with Adiam Segai and me on at least a monthly basis, sometimes more frequently, and I'm, you know, I'm texting and calling Mark frequently about college matters, and he has been a very strong observer and supporter of the college. And Ben is right there with him, and we appreciate that, I just want to say that for the record. Adiam, if you could comment, I know it's probably in your report, but I know you've just attended a national conference for college leaders.
Thank you, trustee Flip. It was, it was exciting, Community College National Legislative Summit. It was in Washington DC. It was incredible to, to be around all the community colleges and other leaders. Board members are included there, so next year, all the board members are coming with me. So that was exciting, but I did find a space with our SUNY community colleges. And part of that was really to discuss, you know, funding for community college. And as you know, First Lady is very much an advocate of community college. She herself teaches in community college, so we really had an inspiring speech from her in one of the events. And so I think part of what we did as SUNY, SUNY community colleges advocated for more funding specifically as it relates to student access, Pell Grant, how do we increase that? The, the other focus was really workforce. And I think what I found in the conversation in the different session was that our college is really in part to where the direction and where the needs are in terms of our workforce, micro-credential, in terms of direct employment. So we spent a lot on that, as well as we, we talked a lot about the other side, the social science, the liberal arts side, side of it. And I'll talk a little bit about some partnerships that we're doing here, but it was incredible, so thank you to be able to, to do that. I have a lot of networking connection and, and best practices from all the community presidents and their, their board members as well. So more to come during the retreat that I will be able to bring to the board, specifically to the board's agenda.
Very good, thank you. And I'm glad you took the initiative to attend that and, you know, really engage with that type of, type of a gathering. Very important. I wanted to say just a quick word about Bill Ruder at the moment, because I, I feel like Bill has been quietly helping a great deal. And I'm looking around, his head is nodding throughout the room. And, you know, Bill, Bill has been very gracious. He, he had a long career here at SUNY Erie. He went away to Hudson Valley, came back, became our interim president, and has helped in so many ways, not only Dr. Segai, but predecessors and others for not just years, but decades. I don't know if there's a more devoted person to Erie Community College. And just to see Bill finding a way to help now is very gratifying. And I don't know, I don't think he's on the line today, but I just want him to be recognized at the board level here. And we've lauded him in the past when he was working as our president, but now I think it's even more impressive, because he doesn't carry the title, he's just helping. And I think that's great. So, Adiam, I don't know if you want to say anything about.
Absolutely. He's on, just with me, as you've probably heard Cathy, Arda, and others, Bill is a true leader, right? Because part of leadership is to create other leaders and to support them, and he has done so, right? And I think for us and for the college, his effort and what he has done, his legacy continues to carry on with us, right? And so I am so grateful, indebted to him, and, and he just gives us perspective, right? It's never about do it this way, it's, it's, these are all the different options that you have. I'm empowering you to make that decision, so I am certainly personally grateful, but I know the team is as well. So he's constantly around, because we, we call him and text him night and day, let me tell you, so I'm pretty grateful. And he's still around, so he's, he's not going anywhere, because we're not letting him be there.
Cathy and Arda, you were both mentioned. You want to say anything about Bill or, or comment?
Oh, he's just genuinely probably one of the most humble people I've ever met, and always willing to help, so I, I really owe him a lot from him, and I hope we can continue to, to, you know, reach out as much as we might need his good grace, and he's been very helpful.
Thanks, thanks. And Arda, I know it's financial especially.
Without Bill's leadership, I'm not sure if I would have been able to survive, in all honesty. He certainly has helped me personally to come out of my shell just a little bit more. As an accountant, I do all the time behind a desk and just do all the work and stay quiet, but it's definitely, without him, I wouldn't be here. That's all I can say.
Well, think about your email yesterday, you know, that's not being behind a desk, that's leaning forward. Good job. Yeah, Mike?
Just a comment, when, I was board chair when we brought Bill on as the interim president, and it's just hard to overstate how first difficult that period was. I mean, we were in a real jam at the time, and then Bill came out, and within a month we had a cyber attack. We had, I mean, just the things that had happened under his watch in the 18 months he was the interim president. You know, he was just crucial in the providing key leadership to keep this school moving forward. And I think all of us are here today because logic is built, played a role in putting us in a position to, to carry on. So I just can't say enough about Bill's just devotion to, to the community college idea. I mean, statewide, he's, he's a leader statewide, but for us here, he's been absolutely.
Tremendous resource, and I'm glad he's still in the picture and helping in a, in a way that's comfortable for him and for, great for us. While thanking people, I want to say, thank you to Dr. Cynthia Buckley, who tendered her resignation after coming to us from Oklahoma and did some fine work here under, in a very difficult time, Len, as you, you point out, how difficult this has been since, since we've all been in traces here. But Dr. Buckley is moving on to other opportunities, and we will be looking, as Adiam sketched, at a different time in the meeting. That's exactly what we're doing with Human Resources, I mentioned the committee we're setting up, and we'll certainly have leadership in that area to be determined. But I want to thank Dr. Buckley for her service here. Just a quick thing, I've had a number of people reach out to me, as all board chairs do, to have a little time, have a little coffee, talk. People send me letters and emails. People send me letters and emails and sometimes get together with me. I'd like to single out Karen Krasinski and Patty Lucido, who both wrote, reached out to me, along with Mark Gallin, with whom I'm in frequent touch, foundation head. Now, these are folks who, I think with good, solid motives, wanted to just share thoughts about the college, what's going on, what, how they fit in, what their background has been. And these, in the case of the two ladies I mentioned, they've been here a long time. And I appreciated them taking time to spend with me, just to share, and not to really demand anything, just, you know, here's what I'm thinking and here's what my observations are. So I encourage anyone in the room and others to do the same, not just with me, but any board member with whom you're comfortable. I think we want to set that tone here at the board.
Absolutely.
And that's really important, because you guys are on the front lines, and while, you know, we are in meetings with you, sometimes a coffee lets you have a more intimate conversation. So I just wanted to single out those folks who reached out to me. Let's see. Oh, when I mentioned the foundation, we are having a joint meeting of the two boards, the foundation board and our board, in about two months. So just take note that that's coming up, and that happens every year. As for the Amherst fields, the 500,000 from the county, 2 million from the town of Amherst, and 2.5 million from the state, adding up to five total, that is carrying on a pace. I have talked to particularly Ben Swanikamp, who's taken a real interest in this, and I appreciate Ben's interest. He is watching over it to make sure that the proper sources of funds are identified, that the financial plan for this is happening, and he's fought very hard to make sure that that stays on track. And what I'm talking about here is the migration of our sports fields, particularly soccer fields in Phase 1, to north. And I just appreciate the county's engagement, and of course, the town of Amherst and the supervisor there. So they have really taken that to heart. We're sitting right here at this spot, and it'll be exciting to see what happens for our students as we build up the athletic facilities here. So I just wanted to mention that and say that that's happening, and obviously, Dr. Sagai and others are paying day-to-day attention to things like that, but I'm seeing it, and it's a frequent conversation subject with the county. So I'll stop there, and I don't know what I failed to cover that you would like to cover in your report.
Sure. Eric, do you want to do enrollment first?
Okay, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So I think Bob has the most recent enrollment report he can share on the screen. I don't think at the January board meeting I had as much of an opportunity to showcase our Fall '22 enrollment, but that should be here to start off with. Our PIT, so this is our point-in-time, local unofficial enrollment numbers, and what that was done is compared it then to our previous years, was called end-of-term or EOT. I worked very closely with Kathy. Kathy is working diligently then. I believe we've actually submitted our end-of-term for fall. Those are just being then vetted and verified then through SUNY Serus. I always like to highlight that data integrity and accuracy, because without having that accuracy, you know, it's really challenging, if not impossible, then to be able to make informed decisions of how we move forward. So I say that here because the unofficial numbers are what then I have current access to. The SUNY Serus report should be coming up probably in the next few weeks, and then be able to compare that and report out in our March meeting. However, also working with Kathy so closely, I feel that our current local numbers are within a very acceptable margin of error. Over the spring semester, I think over the summer, we were within 1% locally compared to where it was within the state as well. Further note that this does not include our pathways, non-tuition, non-credit activities. So this is only looking at what you call here the higher ed history, our continuing students, so these are students who have been coming back with us here for the fall semester. New students includes our transfer students as well as first-time students, and then concurrent high school, we call our advanced studies students here. Main takeaway is that overall, as an institution, our FTEs are projected to be around 2% down compared to the prior year for the fall. I think that's actually quite a success. I want to give a lot of credit to Cheryl. Cheryl oversees our advanced studies and concurrent high school program. She is a tremendous asset here to the institution with her ability to continue and build relationships with our high schools, very much indebted to the faculty that continue then to work with then our high school partners to provide then this experience for the students there. And that's where you see the greatest growth. This is also consistent with national trends, in which we're also seeing increases in enrollment with the advanced studies population. And so it's consistent with what you see here, with our current 23.4% year-over-year increase in terms of the FTEs. Also of note, if you look at the new students, down 1% in terms of our FTEs, that's slightly better than what it is based on our projections of high school enrollment that was anticipated based on last year's graduation rates within Western New York. So I say that because I think as, being in this position with a new, fresh set of eyes, that number there is really key to me, because that showcases the value of ECC and the fact that there is interest, especially within the community, to come here, right? Because these are those new students, whether they're coming from another institution or want to transfer in, or coming then here from our high school population as well. Our largest part of the institution, which is represented in the green lines that you see here, those are our continuing students, which makes sense, right? The number, the largest number of students that we'd have here on campus would be our continuing. That is the area of opportunity, I think certainly for the institution. And we say it at each meeting here, that the new enrollment is retention. How do we keep our students? How do we keep them engaged? And how do we keep them coming back here? And so I think as we shift towards that engagement and that retention effort, that's where we're going to see then improvements on that particular component of our enrollment. Going now to spring. So this is our current enrollment as of last week Friday. So in terms of overall head count, this does not include, again, by the way, our non-tuition, non-credit the pathways. This is only looking at our, primarily it's going to be our continuing students and then the new students, transfer and the first-time students coming in. The advanced studies department is still enrolling our high school students at this time, so that's why it's not captured here. And then I have another page that shows that. There is concern when you do look at then our spring year-to-year comparison, being down about 7% from the year prior. And if we look at the next page, it is a combination then of our continuing students and then our new students in terms of that particular category. And new in this is a smaller percentage of the overall institution, though. So although you see that percentage there year-over-year, note that you don't typically see a lot of new students coming in for the spring. The vast majority of these would be our continuing students populations that are here. So when you focus on that number, that down 9% at that particular point in time as of last Friday. Now again, this is compared to what's called our early student survey. So that's a few weeks out from where we are now. So we may see some of those numbers close the gap a bit, but I would be remiss to highlight that concern with regards to our continuing students. And I think visually you can see it very well represented, based on the graph below, where when we look year-over-year, looking at our spring enrollments, the far right is our point-in-time compared to then other years' early student survey. That is where the greatest challenge lies. Again, continue to engage and keep our students here and keep them coming back. The blue represents our new students year-over-year, and interestingly enough, we're right on pace with where we were for that Spring '21 semester. Last spring, we had a slight increase, and then here, we're kind of in between those. So just visually, you can see that the number of new students, not only a smaller percentage, but it's rather static year-over-year for a number of years. But where the greatest opportunity again lies, I would argue, is that continuing student population.
So I think one of the things that we started, and I think it's kind of showing the direction in terms of how do we look at enrollment? So we realigned all the activities or projects that we have for the college that are appropriately under enrollment. So by that I mean, Middle College was never under enrollment. EOP was never under enrollment. So the idea here is that if we connect all the initiative and project that we have under enrollment appropriately, then our effort will be much focused. Because what we were doing as a college was that we were putting a lot of effort just in different things, in some cases duplicate efforts, that was not yielding to the outcome that is needed. So that's one of the things that we did. So under Eric, we realigned all of these programs appropriately. Number one, to support them. Number two, more critically, to do the necessary marketing. But the other piece is that the partnerships that we have. So Middle College is a partnership with the Buffalo Public School. So we really need to focus on that, because we have a direct connection with those students, but when you look at how many of those students actually transfer into the college, it's not, it's not good, right? And so we're missing a huge opportunity. So one of those things in Middle College, for example, is that our contract with Middle College suggests that we only work with the city campus. So by doing so, we are limiting those students and what type of program they would apply. So those students are only applying to those programs that are only at the city campus. So they don't really have an opportunity to come to our engineering technology. Most of them are either in north or south. Or our health sciences, for example, those are the same too. We have two health sciences at the city campus, so those students are really limited, and this was a barrier that we didn't pay attention to. So that's one of the things through our contract with the Buffalo Public School, and I do have a meeting with the Buffalo Public School leadership, to talk about how do we revisit this contract to ensure that the students that are on this program have more opportunity to enroll in a different program and not just be, you know, confined to this. So that's just one example. And the goal here is that we will present to the board and the college community how this realignment of this type of programming, restructuring, the college will enable us to be more targeted about what we're trying to do. Because as you can imagine, everyone is struggling, right? It's not just us, everyone is going for that. So we do have a strategic plan for enrollment that also focuses on non-shred. That is another group that we have to systematically, and we have not done so as a college. So that's another area that systematically we need to focus on. Our new immigrant population is another group that we need to really work through a little bit more, and intentionally, to get those students and to get that community involved. So we have a couple partnerships that we're working on, just to give you an example in terms of that partner, how we want to do that partnership. This partnership came by way of the chancellor's visit to the University of Buffalo, and one of the conversations we had was how many students from the Buffalo Public School actually go to UB. So we could be that bridge in that path. And so out of that conversation, the Graduate School of Education, we met with them, and one of the projects that they're working with us on now is our teacher prep program and early childhood. As we know it, there is a shortage in teacher, in teachers across the country, right? And specifically in Western New York. So in order to prepare for that, what are some of those collaborations? So it's going to be Buffalo Public School, SUNY Erie, and UB, specifically the Graduate School of Education. And so creating that pipeline, so to make sure, so it could be a potential of a five-year program where they would be automatically admitted to the college, and then imagine that our students will be able to UB. So more to come on that, but that's the type of intentional enrollment effort we need to do, because we already know the statistics in terms of how many students are graduating from high school. So what do we need to do to really reinvent that whole concept by really being very deliberate about our partnership, but also realigning all those initiatives that we've been doing as a college, so that we can be very deliberate and have data evidence, so that we can make some changes if we need to.
And I know at the request of the county executive and Ben and others, you're in dialogue about them, about what we're doing on enrollment, where it stands, what our objectives are, and what our outlook is to continue to try to address, you know, what's been a problem, but also present some opportunity for some of the initiatives you just talked about.
That's right, that's right. Thank you, Eric. Just to continue on that, and some of it we already kind of talked, so I'll just highlight a couple. In line with what I just was talking about, I had a chance to meet with the Western New York Consortium of Higher Education Presidents across our region, and a lot of us are talking about the same thing, enrollment, dealing with the storms. It wasn't just us, other colleges and universities have also dealt with that emerging of colleges. We know that that is taking place. So there's real issues that are happening and challenges that are happening with all of higher ed, not just community college, but higher ed. And we're part of that, and that's okay to have those challenges. But for us, I think we have huge opportunity, because to Eric's point, our students are actually choosing us to begin with. Now, the question becomes though, is that are they continuing that process, and then are they coming to our campuses? And are they having the optimal experience both in and outside the classroom? What does that look like? Because that is the key that we need to be able to work on. So I think we're in the same company. I know sometimes we think it's just us, and why are we, right? But I think even in the conference I attended, it was the same kind of conversation, how do we do this different? And the other thing I want to point out is that sometimes we tend to all focus on the same population. So one of the things that I constantly hear is the under-representation of representative population, how do we get? Well, part of it is building that trust. And so as I mentioned the last time, we are meeting with Hispanic Heritage, and they are part of that initiative that I just mentioned with the University of Buffalo. And so how do we do that, so that we build trust? So those are our students. So it may mean that we go into the community and offer initial courses, right? It may mean just being able to do that type of trust-building first, so those students could choose us and stay and be able to graduate. With that being said, student-first is really what I want to always start with, right? And I think enrollment does that. Commencement 2023, as in May '24, it's going to be at Buffalo State, I'm excited. The committee has been working hard to make sure that things are a little bit different from last year and previously, to really make it student center first, but also faculty and staff. We need to ensure that we highlight our faculty particularly, because I always say this, right? The faculty are the ones signing the diplomas. I know it has the president's signature, but the reality of it is that the faculty certify our students, because they're the one who are assigning the grade, they're the one who knows the performance of our students. So we're going to do a lot of focus on making sure that our faculty are fully engaged for the commencement. Our speaker is our alumni, Theodore Duncan. He is one that graduated from the college and has a tremendous story, resilience, commitment, transforming life and his life and the community. So I'm excited about that, that he agreed to be our commencement speaker. We have roughly about 1,500 students slotted to graduate. One of the things that we need to work on is to ensure that our students are applying for graduation. Sometimes our students are not being very consistent with that. And a lot of it has to do with what we put forward in terms of how easy it is for them to do this. So working with Kathy's office and career services and with our faculty, we really need to have a better handle as to who our graduates are by name, so that we could do some encouraging, right? Because we know sometimes students get intimidated in that last semester and not follow through, and things get a little bit overwhelming. But imagine if we know who those students are, sending a letter, or just giving them a point of encouragement, so that they could really finish the finish line. So I'm excited. The board will get regular information through Kelly, so that you would be prepared for that event. That same day earlier, I did volunteer our college to host a Western New York president meeting. I said, yeah, we can host it here for you. So we are going to be hosting that in the morning from 11 to 1:00. So excited about that as well. Just want to make sure I'm not repeating myself here. I think Advisory Council Breakfast, this will be our second Advisory Council Breakfast. It's going to be on April 19 at 8:00 AM, and the focus of this is to invite industry, the K-12, so we're going to have superintendents be part of that, nonprofit organizations. So really, this is all the partners that we have in Western New York. We do it early in the morning, so it's not very time-consuming, because everyone is busy. We're going to have a guest speaker, a keynote speaker, from the CEO from United Way of Buffalo and Erie County. Thank you, Colleen, who was able to get, Trina?
Trina Burks.
Trina Burks is going to be our keynote speaker. Along the side with that, you know it's about students, we're going to have alumni student as well as current student speak to the group. So we will also send that invitation to you through Kelly, so that if you have time, please join us. I think it's an incredible opportunity to thank all the partners that we have for the college, in a very short way, but highlighting our students and them speaking to the group. Paul, do you want to just briefly give an update of the city campus, where we are with that?
Sure. Before you do, Paul, this is a time when I have to excuse myself, so if I could ask Vice Chair Baker to please take over. I think we're pretty close to the end of our business.
Yes, wow. Incredible.
Lesson learned. I appreciate everybody's attendance. Janet, thank you for being here today for the Buffalo News, and if to the extent you need some additional information, any of the folks here can help. Again, with my apologies, thank you for everyone. We'll be in touch soon.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Before you leave, may I ask you to adjourn the meeting and go into an informational, because we're losing the forum?
Are we losing the forum?
Yes.
Right. Is Candace back by any chance?
No.
Not yet.
Okay. Then let's officially adjourn the meeting with motion to do so, and then to the extent there's any cleanup, we'll just do informational items for a few minutes after I leave. So motion to adjourn the official- So motion to adjourn the official meeting?
So moved.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Thank you.
Official meeting adjourned and informational stage commencing.
That was incredible. I don't know how to say that.
Necessity. Thanks, Paul.
Thank you.
Is that okay?
Yes.
Do you need me for anything?
You're good, Arlo. Thank you so much. Enjoy your trip.
All right. Enjoy the rest of the day.
Thank you so much.
She wants to go back to vacation.
I know. She's kind, her family's waiting for her. We're almost done. Paul, I just want Paul to just give a brief update of the city campus.
Do you want just city campus or other capital projects or Frontier or anything?
Briefly.
I'll try.
I want to keep with the time.
I'll try not to ramble.
We have a lot of time.
So briefly, city, city campus, the drying is well underway and while not complete. We've kind of broken the project up. It's not all under Servpro's lead. It's really under kind of the college lead now. So Stoll, Metro, Servpro are kind of working in coordination with me and then our insurance carrier Hanover and Lolly. So the, the drying is to a point where Stoll requested a authorization to move forward with abatement. So we're actually beginning abatement on the 20th, I believe. We'll start, they're, they're going to start in the areas that are completely dry or what they call dry to standard. They will, they'll begin that on the 20th. Then we'll proceed with other areas as they begin to, are, are dry enough to address. The, I do not have a timeline. The original timeline provided by Servpro was six to eight weeks for the abatement process, process. And that, we believe that's still approximately accurate. But again, I asked Servpro, I'm sorry, Stoll for a confirmation of that timeline just so, because we can't start the reconstruction, which isn't extensive. It's mostly ceiling tiles, floor carpeting, and two bathrooms. But the ceiling tile, and while it sounds like a lot, a lot of that stuff is fairly quickly installed and replaced with the exception of the bathroom work. Other, other than that, there's really no news to report on that. You know, the hardest hit areas are still pretty much that, that straight chute down the Swan Street side from roughly 560 through 460 to 360 into, and started spreading out a little bit. The elevators that were damaged are all back online. The roof repair, we've had Grove out, they've given us some proposals. We've authorized that work to begin. They're in the process, process of getting a hold of a 135 man, or 135 foot lift to get to the roof so they can start the clay tile replacement. That will also improve the drying because we lost not a ton, but a pretty fair amount of clay tile that were actually slated to be replaced completely next summer slash fall. And that, that's kind of it on city. I mean, if, if there's any other questions on that, I can kind of give a brief update on some of the other projects we got going on.
That's good, that's good. Thank you.
The clay tile roof, originally the bids came back in like more than double what the anticipated cost was going to be. So it's out for a rebid. It's going to, the bids are due on March 14th, so we're hoping that that work can begin over the course of the summer. Because of the unexpectedly high bid price, they're only going to do the south and western side of the building, which are the weather sides. Those are taking the most beating. We really haven't lost any tiles, so to speak, on the other side. So those are definitely the priority. The skylight, that is going to begin. I think they're going to start doing probably some scaffolding work in April, later April, with the work to begin in May. The athletic fields trustee Stone updated you on. That'll actually be a two-phase or, right now it's planned to be a two-phase project where like a $5 million Phase 1 and a $5 million Phase 2. That'll ultimately end up in approximately, or planned currently for like two multi-use soccer fields, softball, and a baseball diamond plus other peripherals like lighting, scoreboards, refreshment stand, things of that nature, restrooms. The spring exterior, there's a project starting this summer. We're coordinating with student services and academics. They're going to be replacing all the windows and doors and doing some exterior work. And if you've been through the quad or around the campus, a lot of the tiles that's been replaced doesn't necessarily match the original. So that's part of it to try to bring it into, so it's one uniform look. Kittenger, we upgraded, we did windows and doors there that was just completed in the, this past summer. There's still a small amount of work to be done. And now we're in the planning phases of upgrading the hallways, classrooms, some of the AV capabilities of the classrooms. We've had some working sessions with Dr. Sky's cabinet, but also some student work groups to get their input on what works and what doesn't work in the building. Trying to incorporate more collaborative learning spaces, student space, like for lounges, that type of thing. We're replacing the B mechanicals, or that was supposed to start, we were supposed to bid that in the next few weeks, but that's getting pushed off until we get the, the bid results for the clay tile, just to make sure that doesn't exceed the capital project funds that were planned for the mechanical work. The hallway down here, the Torazo map that everybody, that bit of an eyesore that we've been trying to get fixed for I don't know how many years, that work is actually going to finally get done this summer. We're supposed to start it as soon as the spring semester ends, so probably around May 20th. We have a, a meeting with the contractor next week to do some core sampling to make sure that the coloring matches. Other than that, like recently, we finished the windows and doors in K. The north ADA, that's still getting a few wrinkles ironed out relative to some door lock cores being replaced. The city campus pool project was done, completed by the summer. And then Gleisner and the library windows and doors will be worked on next. That's probably about two and a half years out. Any questions?
I want to ask a question. I took, I looked at William through the packets from last month and this one, and I'm just not seeing the details of the peace agreement for the state contractor. Is it there and I'm missing it?
There is no contract yet. The contract is being executed currently. So it's in, the contract's basically drafted, it's been signed off by Gilbane Turner. I actually have it right now to review the content to make sure nothing has changed since we sent it to them. And then once I get it, I'll forward it to the county attorney for form, and then it'll go to Dr. Sky for execution.
So the details as far as what is at space, how much, what the, what the revenues that will come from that is not, at one point, is that available?
I would say once it's executed.
Is there other space that we're missing out on south?
Yes, right now, the, the next consideration is a partnership with Frontier High School. They have a program that, they, they got grant funding. It's actually in Kenmore as well. It's actually a, I believe it's an international program called Big, The Big Picture. They're basically taking highly functioning or, not highly functioning, I guess, intelligent students who just aren't cutting it in that regular class structure or environment, whether it's peer pressure, anxiety, maybe prior bullying, that type of thing. They've been finding that these kids are actually very successful in this other learning environment. We're going to start with about 25 to 30 kids. It's planned to start next fall. Again, we're just in the preliminary phases. This started with Dr. Balkin, but then it kind of, it seemed like it kind of died on the vine. We haven't really had much contact with Frontier for the last couple months, but now that's being, coming forward again. They'll have a principal or assistant principal onsite, psychologist slash social worker, part-time nurse, and then about four to six faculty members teaching a general, high school curriculum, math, English, phys ed, art, music, all that type of stuff. Their food will get transported from Frontier, which is only about a mile and a half, two miles away. If there's any type of breakfast program or lunch program. And the students in the other programs and as in this one, will, are planned to graduate with Regent's diplomas. They're, they're smart kids, they're just, they're not making it in their current situation.
And it's a great opportunity for us to closely partner with them so that if those students are interested in our program, we could introduce them much earlier, right? And be able to do this. So we'll work closely with our faculty and our chairs to, to create that collaboration.
Nice. Very nice.
Thank you, Paul.
Okay.
Okay. The student trustee.
Just the student trustee?
Yes. Thanks.
All right. So I, I actually have some, not requests, like complaints about some stuff that is going on with the college. I was in contact with Ian, he's a student ambassador, and he was kind of like gathering information, you know, helping me with like reaching out to students and trying to find what is going on. So some of the complaints is like lunch times too short, and some of the, the students are getting out of the, their classes and the cafeteria is closing, so they're complaining about this. Students are having a hard time to get a hold of their advisors. I don't know which advisors, if it's all of them, some of them. I also heard from him that people from offices are getting offended easily when students ask multiple questions. They, yeah. The nurse office is closed most of the time. And we, right now we only have one nurse, if I'm not mistaken, for the three campuses. He also said that students are saying that there should be more counselors at SSC because students wait long time to get in. They were complaining about less day to add drop and asking if there is anything that we can do to make it a longer period, maybe two weeks. I don't know if that's possible or not.
It's like tight.
Say that again?
Less day to add drop should be.
Oh, to add drop?
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
He also said that, he heard complaints about having to wait for days to, to fix some problems. I guess it's like the, in the, the blackboard, the, the system online. He said that there should be.
Bright space?
Yeah, bright space. There should be someone easier to reach without having to wait for days and weeks to fix an issue or at least to lead us to the right directions instead of keeping telling us to go left and right. This is exactly what he said.
Okay.
And the last one is students are afraid to report their bad professors because they think, they think their voice won't be heard or they will have a hard time in the future. And this is everything.
Okay.
What's the mechanism now if you're hearing, I mean, besides this meeting? If you're, if you hear complaints, especially if they're not a one-off, like if it's a pattern, what, what's your process for getting them elevated?
So the, the complaints?
Yeah, just in general, like when, you as a student trustee, how do you elevate these issues?
So our office is open, so whoever wants to go there and talk with me. But since it's hard for me to reach out to everybody, he actually came and he was like, you know, we, we want to do more than we're doing right now. So I have students talking with me and they are a total of four ambassadors. So they have like, I would not say the massive network with the students, but they, they can reach way more students than I can do. So they were gathering a lot of complaints, sending me a list. I actually have a new one that he sent me yesterday. Didn't I bring this to the dean? And he helps me like, well, you, you can bring this to the board and, oh, no, this we already solved the problem. This is not related to the board. So this is the, the line that I followed you, you brings a few.
So I think all those, excuse me, all those concern, myself, thank you. And I know Ian was also at the Senate and, and brought some of this concern over there. So part of what I believe and I think all of us is to empower our students to do this. And so one of the things that we have to work on and do better is notifying our students across the college that it is okay to bring your concern and that they would not be punitive whether it's in the classroom or outside the classroom. So we have to create a culture to our students, starting from the orientation all the way to that experience so that students feel comfortable that this is part of what you do as a student and empowering our students. So that's number one. Number two, a lot of this stemmed from the fact that the student affair side of the house has not been realigned appropriately. So to, to the point that I was referring to earlier about enrollment, that is one of the next step, immediate step that as a matter of fact, as of next week, we're going to change that. Because part of what, pretty much all the things that you mentioned has to do with that student affair side of the house that's not clearly defined. And so, one, defining that. Two, who has those accountability? Who is overseeing counseling? Who is, right? And we have people that do, but be very clear about it so that students have a map as to who they need to talk to. If that person is not there, what does that look like? So that's a work that we need to do. The other piece, I think, is that now that we went through the layoff and we had lost people, whether they, you know, chose to or not, that is another area that we're looking at to see, okay, where did we lose folks and where do we need? So where is that? So we're doing that assessment, again, quickly. I'm not talking about next semester, I'm talking about starting next week because all of the stuff aligned with that. With respect to food services and the auxiliary services, we're going to talk with Sue Howard, Sue Hallway rather, sorry, to make sure that it makes sense for students, right? Our idea could be one, but if the students, if that's not working, we have to do that. The other thing with that, I think we need to be a little bit more critical about and be very intentional is when do we offer our courses and when is the, the cafeteria open, right? So if we have classes running until 2:30 and if our cafeteria is closed at 1 o'clock, well, that doesn't give those students. I think we want to be very intentional with Sue and her team to make sure that it makes sense that we have services for students and then come either with that or come with a different alternative if that's not going to work. So I think though, all the things that you mentioned is something that we will do immediately. This speaks to that notion of retention is new enrollment. Because we could constantly bring students in, but to your point, if we're not addressing some of these key points, we're not going to keep our students. Our students are going to choose to go somewhere else, right? So we will be addressing these out immediately. With respect to the drop and add, that's another one where we're working with our faculty, who, faculty do their schedule and the registers office to make sure how we have our drop and add, run, cancel makes sense. And a lot of it does not make sense, just from my experience. So that's an area that we're looking to really work on that. So hopefully by fall, we could look at that and then bring it to, appropriately to the policy committee to make the necessary changes appropriately. So all of the things that you said are very key. And the last thing, I think, the bright space, that's another area that we need to talk to the person to oversee. And perhaps, and part of it is not having enough staff in that area. So reallocating staff to that area so that students who are using bright space, which is awesome, is to really maximize and get the necessary support that they need immediately.
Great. Thank you.
This is great. You can tell all the students, the acting president said so.
Dr. Sagai, and, and Dr. Sagai has talked about, myself and Jeff, about many of those concerns, the student affair. So I mean, it is like, I'm definitely not surprised that, that you're experiencing those complaints. And I know that you've been on top of this and you're working on them. So it, it's interesting, the two of them totally, last week we had this conversation. Okay, we can move on.
Senate chief, I think following this.
Call it Senate report.
Yeah. All right. All right. So I guess we can skip that and go to old business. Any old business? Any new business? Okay. And Candace texted me. She said, is there anything that she needs to hop on to come into quorum? She said her conference is going long. She's still in it, but if she needs to, she can.
Do we need her during the meeting?
Oh, yeah. We are.
During the meeting. Oh, you already did that.
Yeah.
This is informational, I forgot.
So executive session, if we're good with executive session, so.
We're good, right, Kelly?
Yes.
Yes, we are. We're good.
So are we done?
Yes. You got five.
You did this by 11:00. You have five minutes. You got to go by 11:00.
I know.
It's crazy.
It's insanity.